This is Mayor Oaks. I wanted to advise the community that we do not have a quorum yet for the Stanton City Council, but as soon as we do, we will start our budget meeting. Thank you.
I put last two miles. I turned it off.
Yeah.
Yeah, once you had announced, I hit off.
Just can't drive.
Being bad or bringing snacks. Is Terry in town?
Yeah.
Folks who look at downtown as a place to get, you know, need to get something to get in and need to get out. They're not like folks who see downtown as a destination.
Right spot. I didn't even want.
For some of them, it's just.
I guess.
That's me. You've been around so many times, I never know where I'm supposed to be. It was a lot of traffic.
But say, I don't think that's.
Terry's about 10 minutes behind. Well, actually, he should be here by now. He should be here any minute.
Okay.
It's. I'm curious, or owners, do they feel like it's truly creepy?
Phil, I'm gonna run this for you.
Oh. The day after? Yeah.
Might be later than that.
Where's he hiding at?
Oh, okay. I won't call either. Oh, yeah, yeah. We got your miss. Yeah, we, yeah. I hate this phone, by the way. Lock away. I see. If you weren't texting and driving.
Did you need something? Did you need something to drink?
Oh, the door is locked.
Well, I think.
Yeah, I went around that way.
I could see that.
Hmm? Hmm.
Yeah.
I want to buy all the cigarettes.
Exactly.
Good. Stanton City Council member. Okay. This is for Brenda.
Today's the second night.
Today is the same.
Two, two, 22.
Two, two, 22.
You probably recall.
That won't happen again for another 11 years.
Yeah.
Three.
There's a big debate when food trucks were hot.
Oh, that won't happen again.
Nine, 10, 11, restaurant owners. Say. I made a fixed investment in this physical.
No, but that'd still be March 3rd.
You know, cities were letting the 30 trucks ride.
Premium.
Like another 100 years.
Yeah.
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 I think, you know, when you say.
You know.
Retailers.
It was, there was a lot of traffic. Or 30.
Gonna run into a.
Always tough. Different. But it was comfortable.
Where's this? 80 always.
That day.
It'll be a.
For a while, I would.
Terry's running behind. Yep, yep. You just thought you would get home early, weren't you? Well, that's pushing the thing.
I mean, I guess there are a few. Art plays. It's cool, but then you got an art play.
It is.
I. I don't think that's, yeah.
It's the opinion in Charlotte, so it's Charlotte.
What Charlotte's Home law? The downtown law?
Lot of, lot of.
I would say this. Every Friday. Each morning. And. We have that mass gathering at the end of the street. You know.
Early, you go to the building as well.
Right. I think that's, I wonder if that's.
More than once, I told Greg Peterson, he said, one of the ones, he said, you know what, I'm pretty willing to pick up hours up. Just give them up all week. We got spirit for the week is like.
Yeah.
Taking deliveries off of the bus.
Right.
Thought he was like.
System. That's good.
Okay. Okay, all right.
You know, the beach in Florida.
I'd rather be in Florida. I would have gone with, I could clerks down there.
Mm hmm.
Neighbor. Can't hurt.
Hey, folks, this is Mayor Andrea Oaks. We are waiting on one more council member to appear in person. That individual is on their way, so if you can just hang in there with us, we will get our budget meeting started as soon as this council member arrives. Thank you for your patience.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Cause I emailed this morning, cause I was like, what he gave us at the last meeting? I was like, do I need to write that? So I was like, I already. I think he's already. We don't.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I actually had the day off. I've been working on my car and everything, the old car. I have to work 8:06 tomorrow, 7:30 to 6:00 Friday, then 9:02 Saturday at draft. You know, and I will try to take downtime, I'll watch some racing or something, just, you know, get away. Might even have a beer. I'll need it. I have that master in my car and I look at it as often as I can to say, where am I going tomorrow? Otherwise, I don't, I can't, I would, so. And Wednesdays are different sometimes, than typically Thursdays and Fridays. I'm at draft, I mean, I mean, at the hospitals, except the second and the fourth, and they know that I've got, so they don't, they usually schedule me until 1 o'clock. Give me plenty of time. But.
Oh, that's up there for you. Yep, you've already got that. Oh, don't worry, it's right over there.
Seriously, I'd be better to text you. I'd be better to text you. Yeah, thank you for drinking.
Is that door open?
It is open.
Okay, good.
All right, you ready?
As mayor of the city of Stanton, I call the FY 2023 Budget Development City Council Work Session to Order. Ms. Bowery Guard.
Um, would you like to?
I would like to, yes. That a way we can have a full quorum. All right, on February 1st, 2022, I received a request from Councillor Mead to participate remotely in the February 2nd, 2022 Stanton City Council Special Called Meeting due to a family member's temporary medical condition that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. I will now entertain a motion to allow Councillor Mead's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council Procedural Memorandum Number 3.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Pursuant to Stanton City Council Procedural Memorandum Number 3, I move to allow Councillor Mead to remotely participate in the February 2nd, 2022 Stanton City Council Special Called Meeting due to a temporary medical condition.
Right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks, a second.
It's Councillor Darby, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, Councillor Mead, can you please state from the remote location in which you'll be participating in tonight's meeting?
342 Sherwood Avenue of Stanton.
Right, thank you. Could everyone uncancel as well as the audience here, Councillor Mead?
Yes.
All right, thank you and welcome. All right, next, on February 1st, 2022, I received a request from Councillor Dole to participate remotely in the February 2nd, 2022 Stanton City Council Special Called Meeting due to a family member's medical condition that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. I will now entertain a motion to allow Councillor Dole's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council Procedural Memorandum Number 3.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Pursuant to Stanton City Council Procedural Memorandum Number 3, I move to allow Councillor Dole to remotely participate in the February 2nd, 2022 Stanton City Council Special Called Meeting due to a temporary medical condition.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
It's Councillor Holmes, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Councillor Dole, can you please state from the remote location in which you'll be participating in tonight's meeting?
1003 East Beverly Street, Stanton.
All right, thank you. Could everyone uncancel as well as the audience here, Councillor Dole?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, welcome. Now, Ms. Bowery Guard, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor of some members of council. Yes, this is the, um, this is an earlier work session than we've done before, and we're kind of kicking off the FY 23 budget. You've already looked at the CIP, which we'll be talking again about again tonight as well. But this is an opportunity for you to hear kind of how we got here, how we're developing the 23 budget, what are some of the big issues that are before us? And we will be looking for your input as well and feedback as we kind of start the balancing process, and we're really going to be digging in the next month and a half so that we are prepared to present a proposed budget to you on March 24th. Mr. Phil Traer, our Chief Finance Officer, will be doing the bulk of the presentation. I also have Mr. John Vin, who's the Chief Human Resources Officer, he'll be speaking about pay and personnel issues. And we have many members of our staff here who are here to support this presentation, mostly around the capital improvement program, and they'll be here to answer questions as well. So that'd be, and I want to thank everybody for being here as well, so thank you for your time. So that being said, I'm gonna open his presentation.
Madam Mayor, members of the councils, a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, we begin the FY 2023 budget process. While each budget year does stand on its own, we think it's important to review and understand the prior year's budget process before we move into next year's cycle. Slide 2 provides an agenda for this evening. Tonight's presentation begins with an overview of the FY 2022 budget process. From there, we will review major budget drivers for the FY 23 budget. After that, we will review the FY 22 to 2026 CIP. And as Ms. Bowery Guard mentioned, we do have a few of our friends with us this evening to help support that. After the CIP, we'll briefly discuss the ARPA final rule and potential capital projects, and finally, we'll end with some questions and answers. On slide 3, the FY 2022 budget was passed April 22nd, 2021, the amount of 131,176. The city portion of the 2022 budget, including proprietary funds, totaled 90,661,000, and the school portion equaled 40,516,000. Slide 4 provides a comparisons of adopted general fund revenues between FY 21 and 22. General fund revenues adopted in '22 total 61,753,794, which is $5.4 million above FY 21, 56,374. As a reminder, the FY 21 city manager's recommended budget was fully prepared, budget books printed, and within a week of the presentation, the governor declared a state of emergency and shut down all non-essential businesses. Our budget was immediately revised and major funding sources of sales, meals, license tax were reduced by 25% in anticipation of an extended shutdown period. Lodging tax was reduced 20%, and delinquency factors were applied against previous year's budgeted real estate and personal property taxes. All in all, with no trend data available, the city's reductions were closely aligned with projections provided by Jim Regenbaugh. As can be seen, the FY 2022 adopted budget did capture a significant proportion of FY 21's reduced revenue. Still, as the FY 2022 budget was being developed, the economy was still experiencing the economic effects of the pandemic. Also looming and considered while developing the budget was the scheduled reduction of enhanced unemployment benefits in September 21. Of the additional $5.4 million budgeted in FY 2022, $1.2 million was budgeted from undesigned fund balance, which at the time completely depleted our undesigned reserves, excuse me. Slide 5 bullet points are actually reprint of bullet points presented to council on April 2020 during the FY 21 budget process. The school transfer reduction was originally projected to be 1,895 and ended up at 1,805. The reason why this slide is being re-presented is to show where the additional revenues outlined in slide 4 went towards. It went towards furloughs, frozen positions, school transfer, non-compensation expenses. Slide 6 is a re-presentation of a slide that was presented to council during last year's FY 2022 budget process. Some of the amounts have been updated, and it remains a good representation of the expenditure pressure the city was under during last year's budget process, and these pressures remain today. For the most part, these expenditures were largely outside of the city's control. Two major factors have significantly impacted expenses in the recent budget cycles. Development agreements. Businesses associated with the economic development agreements are outperforming budget expectations and are commanding an increased share of sales, meals, and lodging tax revenue, thus driving increased economic development expenditures. The 275,000 additional provision is the amount approved by council to address the increases we experienced in just FY 2021 alone. The second item is outside agencies. When speaking of outside agencies, one organization comes to mind, and that's the Middle River Regional Jail. Our initial 2023 budget projections for the Middle River Regional jails has the city absorbing an additional 307,000 in expenditures above and beyond FY 22's budget. In the initial budget estimate for the juvenile detention facilities, projected to arise at minimum an additional $105,000. And if the center loses federal funds, it could rise as much as $541,000 over FY 2022 budget levels. This is a potential $850,000 expense increase associated with just two outside agencies representing just under four cents of real estate tax assessments. So these are expenses that the city is responsible for, falls outside of our normal operations. Slide 7 is also based upon presentation to council during last year's budget process. The slide was meant to be a simple, straightforward demonstration as to why the city had to resort to undesigned fund balance for its FY 2022 budget. It showed the city absorbing at the time an additional 2.5 in expense. This has been adjusted upward to 2.8 million, being offset by 1.3 million in revenue. This meant the city, the city's budget had to be balanced with fund balance to make up the difference. As a note, these monies were replenished with an FY 2022 budget amendment number 3, which was approved by council last month and appropriated FY 21's excess carryover. Slide 8 schedules actual lodging revenue for FY 2020 and 2021. This slide and subsequent two slides have been included to demonstrate the trend line for major revenue sources driven by the economy that we were looking at when formulating the FY 2022 budget. Our FY 21 trend line in orange through January 21 was below 2020, and the revenue on a year-to-date basis was below 2018 levels. Things began to turn around in March 21 and remained on an upward trend for the rest of the year. Revenue postings for this item runs at least 30 days in arrears, and FY 23's budget will reflect the current trend we are experiencing. Slide 9 schedules deals for FY 2020 and 2021. A trend through January 21 was below 2020, and revenue on a year-to-date basis was below 2019 levels. Things began to turn around in March 2021 and remain on an upward trend for the balance of the year. Revenue posting for this item runs at least 30 days in arrears, and this too, FY 23's budget will reflect the current trend we are experiencing. Slide 10 includes sales tax revenue for 2020 and 2021. A trend through January 21 was flat to 2020 levels. Sales began significantly outperforming the prior year in March and remained above FY 2020 through May before dipping in June 21. Sales tax continues to perform well on FY 2022's initial fears of an economic downturn in the fall of '21 did not materialize. Revenue postings for this item runs at least 60 days in arrears, and FY 23's budget will reflect the current trend line we are experiencing. Slide 11 is a quick update of our major revenue sources. Meal stacks through November up 433,000 at the same time last year. We're projecting to be 850,000 above budget projections. Sales tax through October, 147,000 to same time last year, and we're trending at 500,000 above budget projections, and lodging tax through November up 227 to same time last year, and 377,000 above budget with our projections. Real estate, personal property, and business occupation are all set to meet budget expectations. These increases will be factored in the 23 budget. Slide 12 schedules our historical budget provisions for major outside agency obligations. As can be seen here, over the last five years, these agencies have risen by $1.4 million. Since 2020, they have risen by 881,000, with the Middle River Regional Jail accounting for 92% of this amount. From a real estate equivalent perspective, these agencies have risen the equivalent of 6.68 cents in '17, 4.1 of which has occurred since 2020. Again, as referenced early in the slide, our initial estimates in Middle River Regional Jail costs an additional 207,000 this year. Again, as referenced early in the slide, our initial estimates in Middle River Regional Jail costs for additional 207,000 this year in the juvenile jail, the juvenile detention center, excuse me. If federal revenues are lost, could go up 540,000. Slide 13 begins our discussion of local transfer to schools. As can be seen on the slide, for the last quarter of the century, the state of Golda City has been to provide Stanton City Schools with 50% of incremental year-on-year revenue associated with local tax growths. Certainly, everyone in this council and the scoreboard is aware that by state law, schools are prohibited from raising taxes to support their operations. All school spending must be appropriated by the governing body. I believe we are one of only nine states, if I'm not mistaken, that funds schools in this manner. Given that background of 50-50 split in the allocation of increasing year-on-year revenues, on the surface appears to be fair. As reported last week by school administration, the perception has always been that they've received a 50% allocation of additional local revenues. The following slide is an updated schedule of information provided to school administration and discussed with school administration at our January 4 meeting. Slide 14 is a schedule of calculated local transfers provided by what is considered to be the traditional revenue share understanding versus the actual budgeted transfer. As can be seen in this slide, over the last 20 years, adjustments of some sort was applied to 17 of the last 20 years, until some of the recent adjustments were made to provide capacity for the new high school. The point of this slide is to demonstrate that the perception and the reality have historically been at odds. Slide 15. There are multiple reasons why a 50-50 split is not always achievable. While I am not in a position to discuss variances that occurred prior to my arrival, I am in a position to discuss the FY 2022 variance. On slide 15, I've scheduled out the budget or revenue variance for local taxes, state categorical and state non-categorical revenues between FY 2020 and 2022, 21 being left out for obvious reasons. As can be seen in this slide, the increase in operational resources before local transfer considerations equal 1.7 for the schools versus 1,016,000 for the city, a variance of 689,000. When the year-on-year transfer reduction of 223,000 was factored in, the school still had 465,000 greater resources in the city to apply towards their operations. Had the traditional revenue share understanding occurred, the schools would have had an additional 2,036,000 revenue versus the city's 1,016,000, and the city's negative contingency would have risen to $843,000. When slide 15 is put into context with slide six and slide seven, we believe it becomes clear why the overall financial picture must be taken into consideration rather than applying a black and white formula of a 50-50 split, which has historically not occurred for over 80% of the time over the last 20 years.
Mr. Trayer?
Yes, ma'am.
I know you're on a roll, but going back to slide 15, can you tell me the difference between state non-categorical and state categorical?
The state categorical is for like for us, they would be applying funds for streets, police, funding, some fire fundings, and the non-categorical is some of the additional support that we get that are not as plugged in. From the school side, the state categorical is pretty much from their template. That's where it appears in the budget. And they have their SOQ funding, their basic aid. They have some specific funding for special education and things like that, so.
Thank you. I'm sorry to have you interrupted.
No, that's fine, ma'am. And slide 15 is put into context. Okay, other considerations. The schools increased staffing by 19 positions in 2022. They're also in a position to provide staff with a 5% increase in July 1st. Conversely, the city added one position to the general fund budget and provided a 3% increase effective October 1st. The schools budgeted 220,000 in undesignated fund balance. The city budgeted 1.2 million in undesignated fund balance, which again completely exhausted the city's undesigned reserves at the time. Finally, the city needed to budget a negative contingency of $300,000 in order to balance its FY 2022 budget. Again, the overall financial picture of both organizations must be taken into consideration. Last year, Ms. Mead, I think you had made a reference of somebody having their head in the oven, in their feet in a frozen pond, and on average, they were fine. I think it kind of applies here when you compare the magnitude of the differences between our two budgets last year. We definitely had our head in the oven. Slide 16 addresses other considerations of inflationary pressures. We are all aware that the inflationary pressures of our organizations are real and are projected to get worse before stabilization occurs. Both organizations are reeling from labor shortages and exorbitant increases in nearly all expenditures. But before we complete our 2023 budget discussion, it's important that we put into context what the most recent consumer price index means to the citizens of Stanton. The December unadjusted index reports the following inflationary increases over the last 12 months. All items, 7%, food at home, 6.3%, gasoline, all types, 49.6%, fuel oil, 41%, electricity, 6.3%, pipe gas services, 24.1%, used vehicles, 37.3%. I think folks have seen their property tax increases have gone up. Apparel, 5.8%, shelter, 4.1%. Obviously, these figures signal a regressive hit to our citizens who can least afford it. When formatting the budget, we do take into consideration the school operations as well as the city operations and our citizen impact. All three must be considered when we make our recommendation of resource allocations to city council. And that moves us on to John Venn's section, but I'm happy to address any questions that you may have at this time.
Are there any questions or comments by council members?
All right.
This is Brenda Mead. Mr. Trayer, I have quite a few questions, and I can ask them now or I can ask them later.
Now is fine, ma'am.
Okay, so if you look at the 2017 to 2022 Middle River Regional Jail budget numbers, that has, it's doubled in five years. It's an annualized growth rate of 15% year-over-year. And so I know you're on the finance committee at the jail. I don't believe our population growth, I don't believe we've doubled our population since 2017. Help me to understand, were we just feeding them gruel, you know, five years ago? And now they're eating steak? I mean, what's going on?
I don't think we were feeding them gruel, nor are we feeding them steak. I don't think we're feeding them steak. There has been a multitude of positions added in the last few years. Our bed rental expenditures have gone to the roof. I believe if memory serves me, through last year, we had like up to $250,000 budgeted. We initially had 2 million budgeted for '22. I think they dropped it back to a million. They have increased staffing and finance. Quite frankly, they are unsatisfied with their fiscal agent. So we spent, I believe, a half a million dollars in software, and we're adding multitude of positions, both HR and finance, because they weren't happy with their fiscal agent. And mind you, there is a savings of $150,000 a year. But I think the additional expenditures outweigh the savings that I'm seeing, especially since some of the positions budgeted seem to be pretty low budgeted amounts. This year's budget, I know, is scheduled to go up another $307,000. They've been adding some nurse positions, which I have no problem with. I think they're adding some nursing positions in anticipation of getting a jail expansion and an expansion of their health facility. In fact, they have two more nurses in '23's budget, which while they currently have five vacant positions, I think, and I'm going to recommend that we discard those, not because I don't think that the prisoners need medical attention. They do, most certainly. But I think it's because that they were anticipated, they built that budget in anticipation of jail expansion, which has been put back at least a year. Expenses throughout the organizations are going up. Now, they have been getting some regular increases from the comp board. Comp board, like the schools, does not cover all of the expenditures, so we're picking up some expenditures there. They have budgeted placeholders for police deputies, and many of which are simply placeholders, and they end up budgeting openings. Last year, I think that they had like 10 openings budgeted. So I feel like the localities did very well by the jail by trying to address some issues during the COVID year, and then it just kept right on going. It's almost as if they bill us, we will pay. So I don't know if that addresses all your questions or not. I mean, so it's staffing, it's wages, it's bed rentals, it's a lot of things.
Okay, but it hasn't been because there's been a doubling of the population inmates over the last five years?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. Not at all.
Okay, now that's great. I was going to ask you to review page 15 again, but I interrupted you, so you answered that question.
This is Carolyn Dahl. While we're on the jail, can I do a follow-up to your question? And say, were those increased staffing positions mandated by the state? Or just a decision made by the management of the jail?
I believe that there is a combination of both. Certainly, they were awarded some additional deputy positions by the comp board, I think 18 deputy positions. So I don't know that that's mandated, but they were awarded funding provisions, and they tried to take advantage of that, which you would expect that they would. But some of the other positions, I'm not sure that we need a deputy superintendent at this point. They just added that position. The deputy superintendent is a long-term employee. He is absolutely fabulous. He's a kind-hearted, good man, and he knows the operations as well as anybody over there. But still, they've added a position, an administrative position along with a finance position, along with an HR position and some support positions and technology positions that weren't necessarily mandated. Some of the expenditures truly are because they would like to have some additional positions because they've been inconvenienced. That's how I read it, and that's probably not a popular sentiment, but that's how I've read it.
Yeah, it seems, the increase in expenditures is stunning. I've never seen any other outside agency or affiliated, I mean, compared to the animal shelter, that's, you know, 5K more over that time period. And I think, I don't know, how do we stop this? How do we stop adding all these positions?
I'm doing the best I can. I truly
I'm not faulting you at all.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I do have more influence just by sheer numbers on the finance committee. And I can tell you, I tried everything I could last year. I tried being nice. I tried being persuasive. I tried being kind. I tried being a jerk. I tried everything. At some point, I tortured them enough, and I voted to push it through finance just out of consideration for my fellow members. I did vote against it with the regular board.
Phil? Phil?
Yes.
You made a statement that Middle River wasn't satisfied with their fiscal agent.
True.
Fill me in. The fiscal agent, because I know, I'm assuming the current fiscal agent is your predecessor here.
Is, no. The current fiscal agent is Augusta County.
It's the county, okay. So, meaning that they're not giving them or allocating enough money for them? Is that what you're saying, or why they're not satisfied, or?
I think they were, they felt more comfortable doing things on their own.
Okay. All right.
Councilor Mead, did you have some additional questions?
You know, I did, but my questions are further along in the presentation, so I'll hold. Thank you.
Councilor Holmes?
Just have one is, how's the state doing as far as paying for the inmates? Are we caught up with that or?
No, no, I was just at a meeting yesterday, and while I don't have the exact number, but I do know that like 30% of the population of like, I believe it's 748, is out of compliance. The jail superintendent did speak with the various Commonwealth attorneys. I think they're all, they are all on board with continuing with home confinement and allowing some work release to come into play. I think the jail is reluctant with the work release program because they have a pod that can hold about 20 prisoners, and they're worried about infection rates with folks going out with the Omicron and coming back and bringing that in, although it would be confined to that one pod.
But they were busing them to the Purdue poultry plant to work up there. Are they not doing that anymore?
I don't think so.
I don't, this is Brenda Mead. I think what I heard yesterday is that most of the work release has been halted and that only 10% of the new inmates coming into the Middle River Jail are fully vaccinated or claim to be fully vaccinated. Or either that or the impact of new folks coming into the jail actually resulting in the entire population being less than 10% vaccinated. So it's a, you know, given the current overcrowding and and the number of people who are not vaccinated, that haven't even gotten one vaccinated or who have claimed to have no vaccinations, you know, it's a, that, it would be, I think, a time bomb to bus people out of the jail unless it's from that very limited pod, as you pointed out, Mr. Trayer, or folks that are certain have been vaccinated.
One of the things that they, one of the questions that was asked is whether or not they could mandate prisoners participating in work release be fully vaccinated, and we were told that they could.
Mr. Trayer, as far as the meeting yesterday with Middle River Regional Jail with the board, can you touch on the, what appeared to me as just a head nod vote as far as holding off until January of 2023? As far as the approximately $5 million towards renovations?
Yeah. The superintendent did not feel comfortable proceeding with the current project as it stands, and that's a $16 million project. I think he was also concerned that he may not have the support, as you realize, as you're aware, that you need four out of five.
That's why I said approximately 5 billion.
Yeah. Harrisonburg appears to have not changed their stance. They appear to be opposed to it, and Stanton is opposed to it. And so I think that message was brought forth loud and clear. I certainly communicated that to the superintendent at the finance meeting the week before. I think what they would like to do is see what the effects of time off for good behavior reforms is going to produce, whether or not that's going to lower the prisoner count in Virginia with the state facilities and, in essence, free up capacity to bring in from the regional jails. That law goes into effect July first. Currently, inmates can earn four days of, or time off days for thirty days of good behavior come July first with qualified crimes. It'll be fifteen days off for thirty days, significant increase. I don't know what those crimes are. So, that and maybe some of the other reforms hopefully is going to bring down the population. They agreed to kick it to January of twenty twenty-three to give it a six-month review as to what the effects are. I don't know that six months is enough time, but they felt like we could review it again in six months. The other point that was very interesting that I caught yesterday, which I'd never heard before, was that the jail, the medical count with the medical facilities, they currently have seven beds and for the first time, I was told that on a daily basis, they need between nine and thirteen beds. It's the first time that I've heard that. And also with the budget provisions, the state code requires the state to take these prisoners after ninety days and but apparently there's a budget provision that gets captured every year, which gives the Department of Criminal Justice the ability to pull prisoners as they see fit. And apparently that's re-upped every year. So it seems like the law is there, but then this nasty budget provision, you know, puts the backup on the local level. And so I think we need to address that budget provision in future years, so.
Thank you. Great. Any additional questions?
This is Brenda Mead again. Not a question, I just want to make sure that all members of council received the email that I sent. The heading is opportunity to support bills that would reduce the pipeline of incarceration. And I hope that it will be enough information to be, to give folks the opportunity to be active and advocate for reducing the pipeline of incarceration. Because if we just get, if the state just takes a lump of prisoners out of out of the Middle River Regional Jail and we don't do something about the pipeline of people coming into our jails, it's just going to end up being the same. We're either going to support it at the state level, we're either going to support incarceration at the state level, or we're going to support incarceration at the local level. And I don't believe it's going to cost any less if we continue to have mass incarceration.
Yes, thank you for sending that email out to the council, Councillor Mead. All right, Mr. Van?
Thank you. I would first like to say, and you can appreciate this from a human resources perspective, our focus should be on offering our employees a competitive wage, excellent benefits in a work environment that is engaging, welcoming, and meaningful. The city of Stanton should be an employer of choice in the Shenandoah Valley. With that, we have a number of challenges ahead that will impact our ability to retain and recruit employees, which includes the following on your slide. You all are quite aware that we are in a national, regional, and local labor shortage. Mr. Traer touched on the rising inflation costs that will impact our ability to recruit and hire. Minimum wage increase. While we certainly advocate for higher wages for our employees with the minimum rate increase to eleven dollars an hour and with the final hourly rate increase to fifteen dollars an hour in twenty twenty-six, this will continue to create compression issues, particularly at the lower to mid-range of our employee pay scale unless that is addressed. Employee morale and turnover, that continues to be an issue we grapple with. And you all need to understand that is something that we are tackling as we speak. Since FY seventeen, on average, our turnover rate has been approximately thirteen percent with the bulk of the turnovers occurring in Public Works, the Police Department, and the library. With turnover comes direct and indirect costs to the city of Stanton. Rising wages. We continue to compete with private sector and that's very difficult to do. They have deeper pockets than the city does. So that continues to be a challenge that we struggle with. COVID nineteen. That continues to be a significant problem as well. It's interesting, I had Cynthia Burnett run some numbers for me right before I came down here. And since July of twenty twenty-one to today, I believe, collectively, our employees have been out of work about three hundred and ninety days related to COVID-related reasons. That's a lot of time off work because they're out for COVID. And also know that we have been paying our employees. We have a COVID, paid COVID leave, not necessarily a policy that has been in place for almost a year now. So if you're out and have documentation, we are paying those employees up to ten days for being out. So again, that's a loss of productivity when folks are out.
Mr. Van, this is Brenda Mead. And that three hundred and nineteen days, how does that, that doesn't include the three hundred days that the school system?
No, that is, so we're looking two separate. The schools, yeah, the schools were out for a little, approximately over three hundred days and city employees were looking at about three hundred and ninety days. Now, there was a month difference. I pulled data for the city from July to the present. Schools was from August to the present. So it, you know, from both entities, it continues to be a significant, it's having a significant impact on our ability to either educate children or be productive here in the city. And a final challenge, and I know there are more than this, but something that, and I'm not sure where I heard this, but Northern Virginia creep. And what's happening is salaries, Northern Virginia salaries are slowly making their way west and south and are impacting Shenandoah counties of Shenandoah, Rockingham, Harrisonburg. And what that does is it's slowly working its way down here. So we are having to compete with other jobs, other local governments that can offer higher wages because they too have to compete with Northern Virginia. So that's something that certainly is on our radar. I believe we may have lost a firefighter to somewhere in Northern Virginia because of that. So it's something that we have, it has to be on our radar going forward. While any one of these solutions that I have up on here, it's not the end-all, be-all. We truly need to think about what type of compensation package we can offer to keep and retain a wonderful and dedicated workforce. And so first, we have compensation increase. In this, we're looking at both a citywide as well as a targeted pay increase for positions, critical positions for the city of Stanton. As Mr. Traer put, I believe inflation was at seven-point total, something like that. So even if we were to give our employees a five percent increase, that doesn't get their head above water. So that's something obviously to consider. Tidbit of information, we are looking at conducting a salary and compensation study in FY twenty-three. Unfortunately, that information obviously will not help us with FY twenty-three budget, but it is something that we are looking at doing for next year. To my knowledge, one has not been done. I went back from the former HR director, the previous, it's been twenty-some years, if longer. So that's something that we think is very important and we're going to be looking at doing in FY twenty-three. Benefits, we want to continue to offer affordable health insurance, generous paid leave and paid holidays to our employees. We think that is very helpful as well. Employee engagement. Employee engagement really has emerged as a critical driver of business success in today's competitive marketplace. High levels of engagement promote retention of talent, foster loyalty to the city, increase productivity, improve organizational performance and values. In the labor market we are in, we must do everything we can to keep our employees engaged and make the city of Stanton what I would consider employer of choice. It is our hope to complete an employee engagement survey as well as a paid compensation study in FY twenty-three as well, which hopefully will give us some good information in terms of what our employees are thinking, what their needs are. And hopefully that will drive some of our decision-making going forward in FY twenty-three. Questions about that?
Any questions?
Mr. Van? When you spoke about the ten-day COVID leave policy, you mentioned that documented, you know, someone tests positive, I guess.
So it could be for a number of reasons. It could be a family member that you have to stay. If you have a child that is out of school, if childcare closes because of COVID reasons, we allow employees to be home with that child. If they're sick as well, if they have to quarantine. So there are a number of reasons and we require documentation to then provide those up to ten days of paid leave. That's correct.
Any additional questions? All right.
So the next slide, Mr. Traer had put together, and certainly he can comment, but any one percent increase would cost approximately one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Is that correct, Mr. Traer? For any type of pay increase for our employees? This just came in on Monday, which was not good news. We heard from our consultant through MMA about projected health insurance increases that they're looking at or they are projecting about thirty-four percent increase. And what that equates to for the city of Stanton for an entire year would be about nine hundred thousand dollars. Now, keep in mind, six months of that would be, so you would really be looking at about forty, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's a significant increase that we were not aware of and that just hit on Monday. So we'll be speaking with our consultants next Thursday to get a better idea, to get a better handle on what we're up against.
Mr. Van, this is Brenda Mead. So that's just the city share. That doesn't reflect what the increased cost to employees would be?
Yeah, so what we're looking at, we're looking at the school, the school portion would be about one point two million, city nine hundred thousand. And so no, that's where we would have to make the determination as to whether we would look at the plan design of our plan, whether the city would absorb the cost, whether you pass on any of those increases to employees. There are a lot of different things that we're going to have to take a look at going forward and make some hard decisions. And that is, you know, first step is to meet with our folks next Thursday and we'll have more information after that meeting.
John? But, I mean, has that ever come forward as a bid process or is?
So we routinely, as we're part of the SOL consortium, we're self-insured and yes, I believe next year, we may be going out to bid for our health insurance carrier. But keep in mind, those projections are based on some assumptions they're making and those assumptions don't go away. Claims history and some, a number of other things. So that information, whether we were to select another carrier, they're going to have that information clearly in terms of coming back and making an offer to us. But that is something that is on our radar as well. Any other questions about that?
That's basically, you know, if you pass it on to the employees, that's a decrease in their pay.
Oh, well, even if we can afford a five percent increase with inflation and that, it's going to be a big hit. It's going to be a very big hit. You're exactly right.
Mr. Van, you said that this came to you on Monday and that obviously you weren't expecting it to be as high as it is.
That is correct. We have been
What number were you thinking it might come?
Well, we have been looking at probably over the last, and Mr. Traer, please correct me if I'm wrong, we've been budgeting, I think, probably for about anywhere from a three to seven percent increase.
I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah, so they have basically, they call it a COVID adjustment or prescription costs are skyrocketing. We have some high claims that you cannot predict as to employees, dependents, spouses that are very sick and cost a significant amount of money. So those are really the drivers that we're looking at and we're going to have to make, you know, make some decisions about how we can mitigate those increases.
What was the budget, I'm sorry, what was the budget amount again? I don't know if Councillor Mead or Councillor Dahl could hear that.
The budgeted amount, I would have
You budgeted nine and they're telling you thirty-four.
Sorry, but to be clear, last year, the budgeted increase in cost was nine percent. Is that correct?
And keep in mind, the increase is from January one through December thirty-first. It's not fiscal year. So it splits fiscal years in terms of how that would impact the budget. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So the other information on the slide in front of you has to do with additional requested positions from the city. From the fire department, they are requesting a deputy fire marshal position, which will focus on investigation, education, and fire prevention programs and engine company inspections. They are requesting a full-time emergency management coordinator position to manage the city's emergency management program, the safety and wellness program, grant administration, and preparation plans and reporting. And Chief Carver is here this evening. I believe he shared with me, it's been maybe a month or so ago, that we are the only locality in this area that does not have a full-time emergency management coordinator. Is that correct, Chief Carver? Okay. Under economic development and community development, there is a HUD housing coordinator position, which will oversee the city's HUD program and will coordinate grant funding requests, compliance with federal regulations, and the overall management of the program.
This is Brenda Mead. Mr. Van, maybe you know the answer to this question, but when I saw that position, I, it seems to be one of the reasons for requesting that additional position was so that we could spend less money on outside consultants to do the grant work and administrative work that we're currently paying?
Ms. Mead, I would defer to Mr. Vaughn, who is here, that can answer that question for you.
Yes, that's correct. Having a housing coordinator would help HUD and Housing oversee our program that I'm currently doing myself. But they would also be available to oversee other grants that we apply for as well. It will reduce, it will eventually reduce the amount of money that we're paying our consultant once that individual is properly trained and brought up to speed on all the HUD program. So it would eventually save us some money.
And Billy, can you just remind me what we're currently paying annually to have that HUD grant administered?
I don't have that number. It fluctuates. Each year, we're currently working through four, five funding cycles concurrently that we're trying to balance. And so that consultant is helping us through FY nineteen to COVID funding cycles, FY twenty, and we just started FY twenty-one. So there is a multitude of different tasks and projects that must happen, you just approved the annual action plan, which is done every year. But there are a multitude of projects and tasks that they help us with and they're holding our hand throughout the whole process of those funding cycles.
And that piece of it is actually part of the grant, correct?
We, if I understand your question, we can use up to twenty percent of the funds that come from HUD annually for administration. And it's about seventy thousand dollars.
Any additional questions? Thank you for the clarification.
And finally, under economic development, community development, there is a position of community development director. This position will oversee the planning, building services, permits and property maintenance, and environmental program services, including EPA, DEQ, compliance of erosion and sediment control, including stormwater.
This is Brenda Mead. The need for that, or the recognized need for that position came out of the council retreat, which unfortunately I was not able to attend personally, but which I was able to see online. And there seemed to be unanimous support amongst those present for developing this position so that our economic development efforts didn't have to be divided between economic development and community development. Am I, do I remember that correctly?
Yes, you're correct. Currently, I wear that hat as well, but that is a position that has already been created and is in place. And I currently oversee those responsibilities.
You are a busy person.
Yes, for the short term.
And there are two other positions in, as you see on the slide under Parks and Rec. They were requesting a maintenance worker to help offset the impact of losing inmate labor that has had on the department. And finally, under Public Works, they are requesting one vehicle mechanic for that department. So those are the positions right now that are being requested in FY23 budget.
Any questions?
I would think that we would need perks. Because just COVID is, you know, you're going to count out 10, 15% there. People raising hell about the snow not getting removed and stuff. What are you going to do when you don't have people?
It's, certainly Mr. Johnson can speak to that, but with, you know, higher turnover, COVID absences, absences in general, it does have a significant impact on that department.
Yeah, because Terry, I was going to add, I mean, are we currently still down eight in Public Works? Or maybe more?
We are certainly down in Public Works. It's not equitable. We've had some luck in refuse as of late, some streets. But I can tell you that we used to have 11 people in our utility field crew, and today we have two. So it is an issue, but that's a recruiting issue. You know, creating an additional position doesn't necessarily, in this particular case, it's a vehicle mechanic position that we are confident we'll be able to fill. We have the ability to send vehicles out to have different vendors work on them, and we certainly still use that. But this would allow us to bring some of that work back in. Not that they don't do a fine job, it's just that that vendor isn't there at 2:00 in the morning to put a belt on a salt spreader, the way one of our own mechanics can be. So it's just, this is really us sort of balancing what we send out and what we do in-house to better accommodate the size of our fleet and some of the things we're doing. And obviously, an in-house person does give you that flexibility to kind of cover in the areas that are short.
So if that particular person was approved, then that would basically, you're down 10 while you're waiting on.
We would, it would, most of, the biggest impact would be, it would rebalance how much we're doing in-house and how much we're sending out and give us more flexibility within, with not just our mechanics, but our equipment writ large.
Okay.
And I think we're still crunching the numbers for the actual presentation. I think we can present that it's going to be pretty much a wash on the cost that the amount of money we save not to sending things out will cover a big chunk of that cost as well. But I'll, spoiler alert, don't want to save that for the formal presentation, but we're crunching the numbers on, looking at all the purchase orders we send. We're sending equipment out and being able to articulate what we would be able to do in-house and avoid that cost.
Question, Mr. Johnson. Is that a position that is potentially something that could be shared between the schools and the city?
It's designed for our workload, so in a workload scenario, I'd say no. This is what we are requesting to handle the workload for our fleet and our responsibilities. I think fiscally, Phil would have to answer how that would work. But from a work point standpoint, no, we have, we have tasks to fill up every hour of that mechanic's time, just with our fleet as it exists today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to add one more thing. Has having to do with Jeff brought up in terms of recruitment. Not to be doom and gloom, there are some positions or departments that we really need to focus on, like teachers on the school side of the shortage. Fire, police, and public works are going to be very difficult, and we're going to need to do everything we can to keep those folks and to attract new folks as employees leave us. So I'll leave it at that. If there's any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Ms. Boe regard.
I have, this is my slide, and this, after this slide, we're going to transition into the capital budget. So if you have any other questions about the, we can save your questions at the end, obviously. But what I did is I looked at the Stanton Plan, and Ms. Mead brought up the retreat. And these were two items that did come out of the retreat. One was in the strategic area, West End, developing a small area plan. Right now, this is not in the budget. It's $50,000 to $100,000, and we're trying to refine that. So we're hoping we can, that's something we can include in the budget, because that was one of your goals, is to have that happen in '23. The second is the streetscape plan, the downtown streetscape plan, which is on page 41 of the CIP. These are, there's over $24 million in projects not scheduled or funded. So again, that's going to take some prioritization over time. So that's not going to happen next year, obviously, and we're just, you know, Central Avenue was the latest one completed. But I just wanted to pull these two, these are the two areas that were most relevant for '23 that came out of your strategic plan. And so I just wanted to pull those out specifically to show you that we're trying to work through these. Obviously, the streetscape plan is much longer term, but the West End small area plan we're looking into. And, you know, we'll try to see if we can schedule something for '23. And that, since that was your goal with the retreat, so.
This is Brenda Mead. That just seems like a perfect grant opportunity. I've written letters of recommendation to two local organizations in the last week who are looking, you know, looking, they're developing grant applications to support small businesses, to support food equity in the community. There, this seems to be the season for that. Is there, is someone looking for a grant opportunity in this area for the West End business plan?
I'm happy to find out what you know and to get more information on that, for sure. That would be wonderful. I mean, we do look at grants all the time, as I see them come through my email periodically. So I would love to hear more about that and talk to you about that, if you have some thoughts about that, for sure. I think it is a good opportunity for that, if we can make that work.
Is that an additional opportunity for a HUD housing coordinator, grant coordinator person in community development, or?
Billy, Mr. Vaughn is shaking his head yes.
All right.
He's coming up to the podium. Hold on, he has something to say about this.
Yes, that would be a task that that new person, that position, could search out for appropriate grants and then apply for on behalf of the city. And then do the administration on the grant.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Boe regard. We appreciate the two strategic areas that the council felt were in most need of attention.
And I don't know if you noticed in some of the previous slides, I had some reference to the strategic plan too. So if you go back through your PowerPoint, you'll see some of those other areas as well, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Carolyn Dole. I just wanted to add that the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission are the gurus of finding grants and helping with them. So anytime we see something, I would recommend that you call the staff there and say, hey, do you know of any grant opportunities that this would fall into?
That's a wonderful suggestion. Thank you. Okay. All right, so now we're going to move into the capital budget. This is scheduled right now to be considered at your next meeting on February 10th. So this is an opportunity, again, to review this. We have lots of folks here who can answer specific questions. And of course, we'll have one more opportunity next week at the council meeting to discuss it some more. So turn it back over to Mr. Trey.
All right, welcome back.
Thanks, and we pivot to the FY2022, 2026 Capital Improvement Plan. So far, we have incorporated multiple comments from the Planning Commission. And Ms. Dole, we will be updating the green wave funding category with our final document. Slide 21, as you're aware, this year's plan totals 108,321. It's broken out as follows. General Fund, $61.7 million. School Fund, $9.6 million. Water Fund, $22.3 million. Sewer Fund, $8.8 million. Stormwater Fund, $4.6 million. Parking Fund should actually be $1.6 million, I believe. Based upon the planning commissions, there was several modifications to the CIP, to the CIP plan, based on their feedback and your feedback, and we'll highlight those as we go through. First, on slides 22 and 23, slide 23 in reality. Slide 23, you will notice that we have updated funding source totals at the bottom of the summary scheduled by year and plan total. Funding sources have been broken out in greater detail since last night to provide you with a clearer picture, such as Safe Route to School Project, which is represented with three different funding sources. BDOT reserve funds and a budget amendment. Total source breakout includes the annual budget appropriation, 5.3 budget amendments FY2022, 5.8 million. All other years, 4.1 million. CIP reserves, 43,000. General Obligation Bonds, 16.5 million. BDOT funding, 28 million. HUD funding, 50,000, and ARPA funds, 2 million. A note, based on yesterday's Middle River Regional Jail meeting, we will be pushing jail reserve provisions back one year as this project continues to remain in flux. Slide 24, we have added the status of our current CIP reserve balances. These balances are scheduled to be increased during the course of FY2022 as part of our approved budget. The FY2022 transfer entry from the General Fund to the CIP Fund will occur in June, and balances will increase at that time in accordance to the schedules, which appears on page 29 of the CIP or slides 22 and 23 of the presentation. This information was provided at the request of the Planning Commission. Slide 25 addresses some minor modifications requested by the commission. They included the Bessie Wells Safe Route to School Project. Estimated cost has been updated to $527,272. The Richmond Road Stattler Boulevard project cost updated to $934,970. Stanton Crossing Road Extension project updated to $8,781,224. Slide 26 outlines the FY2022, 2026 School CIP of 6.9 million. Reserve funding includes transportation reserves of $200,000 between FY23 and '26. Furniture reserves of $225,000 between '22 and '26. Maintenance vehicles, ground equipment, $250,000. Mechanical roofs and generators, $500,000. Technology reserves, $200,000. Pavilion of parking lots, $500,000. And CT improvement reserves of $1 million. In addition, School CIP includes one-time funding of $3,050,000 for the School Warehouse Project, $2.5 million provision for the Shelburne CTE renovations, and a $1.2 million provision for additional student spaces at Shelburne Middle. Slide 27 covers the Stormwater CIP of 4.6 million. And as mentioned at last month's meeting, the Stormwater Fund has seen multiple changes to it as staff has reprioritized projects in order to provide the city with maximum impact on stormwater mitigation, as well as reducing runoff of contamination. Additional projects include the installation of rain gauges to monitor water levels within the city, $40,000. We added a bio-detention pond stream restoration project for $900,000. We added the Men's Green Thumb Park pollution reduction of $50,000. Village's asylum stream restoration, $1.4 million. We added the Stanton High School stream restoration of $1 million. Productions include the miscellaneous storm drain improvements of $50,000. The Tams, Caroline, Augusta Storm Drain Projects of $600,000. And we removed the Green Hill Industrial Park Basin Retrofits, 1.3. This item, I may have mentioned last time, needs to be added to the unfunded mandated project list, and it will appear in that section in the final version of the CIP. Unfunded and unscheduled has been reduced, and for the most part, only mandated projects remain on the list. That said, we do have two flood study-related projects, which appears, I believe, page 48 of the CIP and consists of an estimated $300,000 for flood shield and $650,000 for tunnel design, maintenance, and repair modifications. These two projects are potential candidates for ARPA funding and are not officially classified as mandated projects from a regulatory sense.
I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you, just because I thought that the Garland Drive to Hickory Street Bio-Retention Pond deserved special mention. The $900,000 that, that would be part of an effort to mitigate flooding of Gypsy Hill Park, Lewis Street, and Central Avenue, that the creation of that bio-detention pond would divert water that is now inundating those areas of town. So I'm strongly in support of that.
You are well-versed, Ms. Mead. I also have Pete Kessaker here. If anybody has any additional questions on the stormwater, Pete's right here.
I wanted to add to that, and I answered that question, your question earlier from earlier this week. I meant to mention that that project would also include repair of, is it two sewer sections, lile across that reach? So there's two exposed sewer pipes, and there's a storm inlet structure right now where the proposed dam would be, that needs quite a bit of attention in order to keep it cleared. So that would be, that would be dealt with at the same time.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to slide 28. Slide 28 outlines the Water Fund CIP of $22.3 million. While projects such as the Shutterly Mill Tank Repair, Clearwell Tank Repair, and Fluoride Tank Repairs have been pushed back a year due to staffing turnover and shortages. Other projects, such as the Gardner Springs Projects, have remained on course. The design for the Gardner Springs Pump Replacement and Pump Station Relocation is currently at the 90% level. We anticipate applying for permits in short order and based on the progress on this project, we will begin looking at funding sources, most likely debt with our financial advisor. We've also added a water line upgrade in the eastern sector of the city for $3 million in contingent upon grant funding from the state. This project is referenced as Richmond Road Extension, but in reality extends into the industrial section of the city as well. We'll update the description in the final version of the CIP. Funding estimates for this project will most likely be nudged up as well. And finally, still scheduled is Phase 1 of the North River Pipeline Replacement of $6.5 million plus a $500,000 in design fees. We will begin design work on this project at the start of FY2023. So we're about six months away from starting down this road. Changes to unfunded and unscheduled, we're adding the Union Town Water Installation. Again, this was proposed by staff for possible funding consideration after the Union Town Study was completed. This is a potential ARPA candidate. Slide 29, we look at the FY22 and '26 Sewer Fund CIP in the amount of $8.8 million. The Sewer Fund also saw some reshuffling of projects, such as the Stewart Street Sewer Line and the Lyle-Blanford Line Replacements removed from '21 to '22. Again, staffing turnover and shortages have delayed these projects as well. Sewer projects additions include a sewer line upgrade of, a design upgrade of $165,000. Sewer line upgrade in the eastern sector of the city for $5 million contingent upon grant funding from the state of 75%. And we moved $2 million Louis Crete Sewer Upgrade from unfunded unscheduled list to FY26. Changes to the unfunded unscheduled include the Union Town Sewer Installation. This was proposed by staff for possible funding after consideration the Union Town Study was completed. This too is a potential ARPA candidate. And of course, we moved the Louis Crete Sewer Upgrade to '26 from this list. Finally, on slide 30, we have scheduled out the FY2022 to 2026.
I'm sorry, this is Brenda Mead, and again, I apologize for interrupting, but the $2 million for the Louis Creek Sewer Line, is that, are we needing that upgrade in order to provide for the new apartments that are, that have been built along Middle Book Road? Is that why that sewer line needs to be upgraded?
Mr. Johnson's coming to the podium right now. He can address this issue, Ms. Mead.
Councillor Mead, now that is part of a systemic replacement of the Louis Creek Line. It's almost a kind of a continuation. We're coming down commerce. We're coming down commerce now. Got to the switch here. We got to get through the watering can and then work our way up Lewis Creek as we just replace that old sewer line with new sewer line. Right, so apparently I said something wrong because Lyle Hart's on his way up.
Can I ask one question, Lyle, if you don't mind? And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I just remember, you know, when I did my ride along, which I had a blast and I still think about that often. But I remember one of the questions that I asked you was, and we talked about, you were talking about doing it in 20, or started in 2023, the Stanton Dam Pipeline. Yeah, I remember saying, I said, I lose sleep, and then you said, I don't. You still don't think it's imminent? I mean, you think it's something we've got some time.
The pipeline that comes from Stanton Dam goes through a mountain. So there's a tunnel that was put through the mountain with, and we ran the pipe through that tunnel. Now, the tunnel has collapsed, right? We can no longer get through the tunnel. And that, so, which is, you know, a problem and we need to address that. However, we can measure the pressure differential on both ends of that pipe. The pipe is fine. There's been no impacts to the pipe. So the water is flowing. We do need to reestablish, clear that out so that we have good maintenance access, can do all the things we need for that pipeline. And eventually, that 100-year-old pipe that runs from the reservoir to our treatment plant, that's all going to have to be replaced eventually. But this is the first phase. But no, I'm not, if that pipe was problematic, we would be, we would know about it by now.
I didn't mean, I'm sorry, I didn't put you on the spot.
I was just going to make a mention on the, regarding the commerce for sewer line. Mr., what Mr. Johnson said is correct. I was just going to kind of bring attention to that sewer line is an interceptor. It provides service to the majority of the city's sewage goes through that pipeline. And it's, as you mentioned, it's just a continuation of what was started closer to the VSDB area through the Dominion Power Substation. And so in continuing that upgrade further upstream will help reduce overflows upstream. And also currently, our access isn't the best because it's right on the creek and just areas that are difficult to access. And so it's a, that sewer line serves the majority of the city.
Yes, gravity works both, works for both water and sewer. So all the water in town leaves via Lewis Creek because it's the low point. It's also the best way to get sewer, sewage out of town as well, so.
Jeff, when you show up there, I got a question about Greenville Avenue. It seems like we've been having a lot of problems over there. Was that, were you working on sewer over there? Was it water?
The Greenville, the issue out by the Circle K?
Yeah.
That was a water. That was a water issue. Yes, Greenville Avenue sees a lot of action because there's a lot of stuff underneath Greenville Avenue. So it's not that necessarily Greenville is particularly problematic. It's just that there's just a lot of opportunities. And then obviously, when you get down by the watering can, that's a very low, it's one of the lower points in downtown, which means higher water pressures. And so there's a few things that, with sort of geometry and geography that are working against us on that.
Thank you.
Okay, and finally, on slide 30, we have our parking. CIP scheduled out between 22 and 26. Parking Fund, 1.6, 1.7 million. No new projects were added in this list, but rather rescheduling of projects took place. Again, the turnover and shortages and staffing as well as the COVID effect has impacted the implementation of prior year plan. We do have a credit card merchant processor under contract now, which was a big deal, which is a big deal. We needed to make sure any equipment that we have, that we would implement was compatible with our processor. We remain very close, as reported a couple of weeks ago. We were getting closer to issuing an RFP out for that. We have looked at a couple of vendors. Some of them are just incredibly technology oriented, they're just through the moon. But we'll come up with a solution that's suitable for Stanton and we should have an RFP out very soon.
Mr. Trey, I have a question about the parking access and control. How many of those upgrades will result in a reduction in staff required to operate and to control parking?
That's really going to depend on the equipment that we buy, but we certainly were looking for 24-hour access. So if we had a 24-hour credit card access, in-and-out access, or maybe a kiosk where folks could pay in advance and have a card come out, which would monitor their time and give them the ability to exit the garage, that may very well impact some staffing. We also have issues with parking enforcement. We are down in the parking enforcement area and I would venture to say we may be, not trying to be draconian on this, but I think maybe we probably captured 10% of parking violations. So perhaps one or two of the employees could be repurposed there. And there's other areas within the city that need some assistance. And I'm sure that Mr. Venn would work with anybody to help repurpose them into an employable position.
Thanks, Phil.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Trey.
With parking, how much are we taking in on parking? Anything?
Yeah, yeah. I don't have those exact numbers in front of me, but we certainly are capturing enough revenue. It varies by lot. Newtown is, the New Street, rather, is our most lucrative lot, followed by the Wharf and then Johnson Street. We're taking in enough to cover staff wages and to cover our debt service. Our parking rates are very economical and as you know, the city downtown here has free parking on the weekends. So we are covering enough to cover our debt service and we hope to generate enough to perhaps cover additional reserve balances to build up, to maintain these garages without having to issue debt service because they've gone into a state of disrepair like they have before. Because, you know, I think we're currently paying off $1.9 million note with our parking just to repair Johnson Street and New Street garages.
Mr. Trey.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if this is a question for you or Mr. Venn, but do you know how many attendants we have that work the different parking lots, whether it's the Wharf, Johnson Street?
We have five.
Five, okay. All right. Because I believe there is a concern that they would lose their jobs as a result of this equipment.
We have plenty of vacancies.
Hopefully, we can, hopefully, we can place them elsewhere.
We have plenty of vacancies in the city and it will take quite some time to cycle through all of these lots.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, and that does conclude the CIP section. If there's any more questions, we'll be happy to address those. If you have any questions that you think of after tonight, please send them to us and I'll be trying to incorporate all the changes into a final booklet for you to review at our next meeting, so. Okay, slide 33. List projects, no, excuse me, I apologize, I got ahead of myself. Okay, slide 31. Slide 31, we review staff recommendations of an 80/20 split for the first installment of the ARPA funds between capital projects and community outreach support. As you were, the city has been awarded $12.9 million of ARPA funds with 50% being received in May 2021 and 50% scheduled to be received in May 2022. An 80/20 split of the first allotment equates to $5.2 million to address capital projects. Traditionally, these projects would be funded by fund balance carryover, debt issuance, and $1.3 million in community outreach support or city operational needs. Tonight, we wish to confirm council's intention on that first allotment and we hope to receive some guidance on the second allotment, which is expected to be received in May 2022. Slide 33, we will outline some requests that we perceive to date. But prior to doing that, we will review some of the final rules updates on slide 32. Slide 32, the interim final rule finally went final at the beginning of last month. As previously reported to council, the most flexible use of these funds are via the loss of revenue provision, which allows government entities to spend these on government services, which includes infrastructure projects, public safety, environmental remediation, health services, and general government administration. This is by far the route that we recommend the city to go down. As part of the final rule, localities were allowed to claim an automatic $10 million, no calculation provision for loss of revenue funding. If the city were to take advantage of this provision, we would in essence be able to capture 77% of our total allocation. The final rule also allows for the loss of revenue calculation to be performed on a fiscal year or calendar year basis. Previously, we were to report on a calendar year basis for the interim rule. Finally, the other point of interest, the growth rate has been raised from 4.1% annually to 5.2% annually. Our initial unaudited calculations has Stanton being able to be in a position to claim 100% of our allocation for loss of revenue funding. Depending on what avenue we go down, how you want to spend these funds, for the most part, the loss of revenue calculation would cover it. There could be other items that may not fall neatly into government services. That could be additional low-income housing support, things like that, that might have to fall into another provision. Whatever you all would like for me to investigate, I will certainly build a path and put that path in front of our auditors. We just completed our audit of the $4.2 million in CARES Fund. Every single item was accepted. We were audited mult by our external auditors and we've been audited by the state auditors and every single item was accepted. There has been some reclassifications as the state interpreted things a little bit differently than we did, but the expenses were accepted. We throw everything out to our auditors to make sure that we have an extra set of eyes ensuring compliance. We're going to do that with the ARPA funds. The potential for clawback of these funds, if they're not spent properly, is very real. So that's why we are extra caution in our steps and rather than feeding the auditors 50 what-if scenarios, if there's a few projects that you all would like for me to investigate, I will put the path that I think we can go down and I will put it forth for our auditors to make sure that they feel that it's a compliant expenditure. That said, slide 33, list projects which TAF has requested, which totals 25.3 million. Of the 25 million, there's one project that is scheduled, it's within the CIP and does have ARPA as a partial funding source. So that project's the emergency radio replacement project and there's a $2 million ARPA allocation. Right now, we have $2 million in reserves. This is a $4 million project, so we would need $2 million to finish the project. This is ready to go out for RFP. And Mr. Plowman has done a magnificent job in kind of creating the standards for the region. Other scheduled projects appearing in the CIP total 13.5 million include the Gypsy Hill Bathroom Replacement, $700,000. Two fire apparatuses for $1.6 million. Moxley Stadium Renovation, $1.5 million. Gypsy Hill Park Practice Fieldlights, $250,000. Gypsy Hill Park Pool Clubhouse, $750,000. Greenville Avenue Entryway, $2.5 million. And this does include water line replacement costs. Flood shields, $300,000. Tunnel repair and maintenance design, $650,000. Union Town Water, 2.2 million. Union Town Sewer, 5 million. We have two projects totaling 7.4, which are currently scheduled with debt service as a funding source. They include Gardner Springs, 6.9. The North River Pipeline Phase One Design of $500,000. We only have the design here because as you're aware, we have to have funds encumbered by December 31, 2024 and spent by December 31, 2026. And I'm not sure that we would have a pipeline project underway in time to take advantage of that. Therefore, we would just limit it to the design portion of the North River Phase One. And finally, we have three projects requested from staff, which did not get picked up in our CIPs, unfunded, unscheduled. These projects total 2.7 million, include two additional fire apparatuses. As you know, the first two would be to replace, I believe, 24- and 25-year-old equipment. And we also have an additional refuse vehicle requested in this. And BDOT safety improvements for 10 intersections throughout the city. Mr. Rhodes has been working with BDOT on that, trying to get their recommendations on those. And with that, I'd be happy to field questions.
What was the last thing again with BDOT?
Yeah, Mr. Rhodes has worked with BDOT to have a study for traffic improvements at 10 intersections within the city.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments? Any feedback?
This is Carolyn Doll. That BDOT intersection project, is that a smart scale project?
I'm not sure that that is a smart scale project. Mr. Rhodes, would you care to comment?
Good evening. That is not a smart scale project, that's a STARS project. And BDOT and the consultant provided city council back in June an overview of that project. We have just received their final draft on this. They did receive, during this process, public input through the online survey with hundreds of people participating in it. And staff, Jeff Johnson, Lyle Hart, myself, Billy Vaughn, and others are currently reviewing that. And it shows options at 10 different intersections that the city could consider to improve safety and also multimodal access and use of those intersections of streets. Eight of them are downtown, two of them are west end. The proposal for use to potentially fund through the ARPA, those eight projects that could be done within two years. There's a couple others that would take longer than that to do all the engineering work necessary to implement those.
Thank you. Does that include some handicap accessible cuts or signage or walk, don't walk?
It includes a multitude of options, including pedestrian signals at a lot of the downtown intersections, improved crosswalks, repurposing some of the pavements for potentially bike lanes if there's not a need for a turn lane.
Right. All right, thanks. I knew it sounded familiar, but I had the wrong acronym. I'm in favor of the Union Town Water and Sewer and the Gardner Springs, you know, pump because that frees up our money to do other things. Am I correct in that, Mr. Trey?
That is correct. Right now, with the Water Fund, we are in a position to absorb the Gardner Springs debt service without additional rate hikes. However, if we were to move on to the Phase One, perhaps that would require some rate hikes to cover that. So if one is covered by ARPA, then that just means we have reserves for the other one.
Okay. And then my question is about the, from the Stormwater Fund, the flood shields and tunnel repair and maintenance design. Are the flood shields, are they part of that study that we had done?
Yes, ma'am, they are. And Mr. Glover here is right here to speak to that.
Okay.
Yes, that is, that is part of the
Yes, that is part of the flood mitigation strategy that we presented to you back in August. I forget which item number it was, but it's to place flood shields in selected business locations throughout the downtown where they could limit the flooding, flood impacts on those structures.
And those flood shields, I remember from the presentation, they're much more user-friendly than the older ones we had back in the day down at the Wharf when we got those original flood shields that evidently are difficult to put up. I don't know.
Yes, they're much lighter and much easier to deploy, which is pretty important. And that can tie into the rain gauge system that you saw earlier that we have been funded this year, and we've already gone out to get those, could give us some warning. And with the faster deployment, they could be more effective, for sure.
Right. And I have one other ancillary question about the flood shield. I know we had a lot of flooding with businesses downtown, but we also had residential unhappiness and flooding. And I wondered if when we, if we were to do those flood shields, could we have as part of the IFB or whatever it turned out to be, that they give discounted rates for citizens to purchase as well? Not the city to purchase them for citizens, but to get some kind of deal, you know, discount for our residential folks. I'm just throwing that out there. I'm thinking outside the box.
Yeah, I'm not sure. It's very difficult to flood-proof a residential structure just due to the nature of the design. There's a lot more openings below grade, you know, windows, window wells, things like that. So it's very difficult to use shields to protect a residential structure, but we could definitely explore that.
Okay, thanks. I think it's important for us to look at anything. I know some of the plans for the flood mitigation were so expensive, we can't even, you know, deal with it. But anything that we can, I think we should be pursuing flood mitigation as much as possible.
Yes, and that's why the other item, the tunnel maintenance, that is a design for a plan to increase the capacity of that tunnel, which would be a direct impact. And using this source is a much faster way to get to that. Just please note that the request for the ARPA fund is only for the design for the tunnel maintenance. It's not for the actual tunnel maintenance project itself, but just for the design. It would be difficult to meet a timeline to use ARPA funds within their guidelines. So that's why we're just asking for the design portion of it currently.
And Mr. Trey, you know, I can go down through this list and tell you what jumps out at me as being helpful. And I would like to know if you agree or not, but I think the emergency radio, emergency radio, to get that finished would be a good thing. I think to fix the bathroom in Gypsy Hill Park would be a good thing. I've already mentioned the STARS VDOT project and the flood shields and the design on the tunnel and Union Town Water and Sewer. And if we need an additional refuse vehicle, I'd be in favor of that.
That makes Mr. Johnson very happy, ma'am.
And that's why I said it.
This is Brenda Mead. Can you, could someone tell me a little bit more about the Gypsy Hill Park Pool Clubhouse? I use the clubhouse, and I very definitely see the need for some attention there. It is a facility that we see used extremely regularly by citizens. It's an affordable place for folks to bring their families and their kids. And so I think that clubhouse, we definitely need some attention. So I see Mr. Tuttle.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Mead, that request is to remodel the restrooms and the lower level of the pool house itself to make that space usable. So basically, it's a redo modification of what we have, improvements to the showers, basically an overall improvement to the facility, and it's much needed.
It is absolutely much needed. I don't even, I don't even go to the restrooms because I think they're so awful. And the showers, you know, thick. So, good. I think I can support that one.
Yeah, thank you for including that one in there, the Gypsy Hill bathrooms. It's much appreciated.
Go ahead. Phil, let me just make sure I'm understanding everything. So like, when you say the community outreach, we're looking at one point three million. Is that something that we, are we trying to divide this into the community, or you just want to have projects that will, whatever?
We were looking for like, well, we had suggested perhaps at an earlier meeting that an eighty-twenty split between CIP projects and community outreach projects. We're still formulating the community outreach. We had a survey out. We're looking through all of that, and Ms. Beauregard is going to speak to that.
I'm raising my hand. So Vice Mayor, yes, so this is just talking about the CIP portion, that eighty percent that Mr. Trey was talking about earlier. As far as the community portion, yeah, we need some time to absorb. So we received the ARPA survey results a few weeks ago. We're still absorbing that. We need to get that in front of you. That ties well into what you're talking about tonight, and then we can also provide, that will help you, I think, make some decisions about how the remainder of those community funds are spent through ARPA. So as soon as we're ready to get that in front of you, we will do that. But Mr. Trey is right, we're still kind of putting that piece together, and that's why we just wanted tonight to talk about the capital portion principally tonight. And then we'll bring back in front of you soon the survey, and then we'll start to talk about ARPA as a whole and putting the community portion in front of you.
So. Well, yeah, I'm kind of, I'm in agreement with Carolyn as far as the emergency radio. I think that is a very big thing that we need to have, you know, out there. Because I'm assuming that our police, our fire, rescue, they're all going to use that.
Yes, they are.
And, you know, if we have dead spots, and all the years that I was on a rescue squad, I remember there's certain areas we go to and we just lose radio communication.
That's true.
And God forbid, if there's somebody in that particular location, then you're, you know, not a good thing. So I would definitely be in favor of that. I do like the idea of fixing the Union Town Water Station, trying to help out that area of the city. Scott, let me ask you, Chief Garter, I just want to make sure, I mean, because I know, I mean, our fire service, that's an extremely important area. And Scott's going, why'd you say that? But I mean, I don't want to think that we're doing, you know, because we just, we've got a brand-new monster truck, and I don't want to say that, like, we're just keep on pouring money into the fire department. But I do want to know what is most important, that your number-one need is, that, you know, is it a vehicle that we can try to help out with, with these funds?
So as Mr. Trey spoke of, the first initial one point six million dollars replaced two vehicles that should have already been replaced, but due to lack of funding, they haven't. They are twenty and twenty-five years old.
Okay.
We are two vehicles behind in our purchasing plan, and the additional one point four would put us ahead of schedule and actually would alleviate any purchases for eight years, which would allow the CIP money to catch up and actually have a positive amount waiting for the next purchase.
All right. Well, definitely in favor of at least part of that. I mean, you know, I said, I'm just trying to figure out how we can get all of that six, well, what, six, six point five. But I think also the flood shields are a good thing. And how much I, in my head, real quick, I don't know how much I've put out there, but.
You had mentioned the Union Town Water would also be.
Yeah, Union Town Water. I think that we definitely need to, you know, help that area of the city.
Okay.
At least in my thinking. And Jeff, a refuse vehicle would, I mean, because we're really in severe need of another refuse, like a trash drop, basically.
Okay. That would have nothing to do with recycling.
Vice Mayor, may I ask a clarifying question, please?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Union Town, there's water and sewer. Can I assume that you mean the whole package for that, water and sewer?
Yes.
Okay. We just wanted to double-check on that. Thank you.
Biggest problem with Union Town is the failing septic systems? Or is it just not the water?
Now, we have some water going out there. I do not believe that we have sewer. Mr. Johnson, who's better versed than I, is coming to the podium.
So the issue on sewer is that there is no sewage collection in that neighborhood, and we really don't know what the septic situation is. Does the city have no visibility of what those, that's a relationship between the property owner and the state, and we're sort of cut out. So that's the issue with sewer. On the water, the lines are old, they're a little bit undersized, but more importantly, when the bridge was taken out on National Avenue, that also cut off the water line that used to hang on that bridge. So our system there, it's got a lot of dead-end sticks that makes it extremely difficult to circulate. So there's the infrastructure issue with the pipes, but there's also our operational ability to circulate the water and make sure that the quality that gets to each customer there is what we want.
One other question. So this five point six or six point five million that we're kind of, the projects we're doing now, that is for this year of the ARPA funds, correct? And then maybe, maybe then next year, we're going to get hit with another drawdown from the feds?
Yes, we can, I mean.
We will have another, we can have some more projects we'd like to set, maybe.
Yeah, certainly. What you're doing tonight helps me put together a roadmap, which I can present in front of council. And the timing of the projects can be at council's desire. We certainly have the first tranche. We got the second tranche coming. It'll be here within about four months in May. Should be here like in three months, I guess.
Well, the reason I say that is that the first tranche, we can get part of what Chief Garter wants, and then maybe the second tranche, we can get the second half of what Chief Garter wants as far as taking care of him for the next eight years. I mean, I like that idea as well.
We can do our projects one tranche at a time, but given the fact that we're probably within a hundred days of getting our second tranche, if, you know, because I'll go down these paths with our auditors. We can come back to you all, and then you all, at your discretion, can tell me what you want to do. If you want to do it right away, we can do it right away, provided that we have the funds in the path.
I just like the idea of taking care of our fire department for the next eight years. I know Chief Garter will probably find something else he wants, but but, yeah, I definitely like that idea, and I like the idea of emergency.
I'm sorry.
I like the idea of the emergency radio. That's, I think, a big absolute get that we need to take care of.
This is Brenda Mead. I apologize for interrupting. I kept thinking you were finished. So what we have is a total of thirteen million dollars, right? That's the first six and a half and the second six and a half. There's nothing coming after that. Is that correct? And so what we have before us on this page, number thirty-three, is twenty-five million dollars of requests. And regardless of whether the money is in the tranche we've already received or the tranche that's coming in in the next hundred days, we have the same deadline to spend these funds. Is that correct?
True.
Okay, that's great. I just want to make sure that was clear to everybody. And then, and then as far as our decision about dividing the eighty-twenty divide, I can't make that. I can't, I don't have an opinion on that at this point until I understand more about what our citizens have asked for in the surveys. So I'm looking forward to getting that information. I think that will inform us both on the eighty-twenty for this, for the funds we've already received and the eighty-twenty for the funds we expect to receive in a hundred days.
Can I ask one further question? Leslie, and maybe Phil, so I'm assuming that these projects that you have on page thirty-three have sort of been passed through and look like the feds or the auditors, or we don't know that yet. They think maybe these are good to go, or?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Trey on that one.
I have not passed these by the auditors, but these are projects that I feel comfortable the auditors would approve. Prior to writing it up, I just wanted to get some head nods from you, and I can write that up in short order. I know the past in my mind.
Okay.
I think part of this list was at least determined by hearing what your priorities have been. We've been listening to you, you know, what's in your strategic plan, what we're hearing from departments. And obviously, there could be other things. I mean, I'm sure the list is really more than twenty-five million, but you have to pick and choose what you can do. And so this is very helpful, as Mr. Trey said, and we'll start pursuing this. And he'll start talking to the auditors, obviously, about these projects that you've identified. And, you know, we're hearing a lot of good common themes here, so. But that's where this list, the initial list is coming from, is what, you know, kind of the feedback we received already throughout the years in terms of what's important, and then what's important to this group recently that came out of your retreat last summer. So. Are there any additional comments?
I have some, yes. The Moxie Stadium renovation. Now, didn't we do the bathrooms on that not too long ago?
I'm not sure, Mr. Tuttle.
I thought we did those.
I don't know the answer to that.
I can find out for you.
We did, we did the team, whatever you call it, the locker rooms.
Locker room, yes.
It included showers and bathrooms and all of that stuff. So they've all been renovated, yeah.
I was just wondering, is that the stadium itself, like the bleachers and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, yeah, and the dugouts.
He's coming back.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes, for finding.
Tried to get away from us.
I was going to the restroom.
I had a feeling that's what it was.
I missed the question.
I was just curious as to what the renovations were at the Moxie Stadium, because I knew that we did the locker room a while back.
That's different, though.
Yeah, that was for the Field House. We completed that. But Moxie, and that's more of a place to hold it in the CIP at some point. I don't, I've met with Mr. Trey, owner of the Braves, discussed it with Stanton High School. Moxie was built, or the field itself and the dugout in the forties. It's way past its life, the bleachers, the seating area. So that recommendation is basically to take it out, all of it, redo it, do it right, do it with nice circular bleachers, new press box. Your dugouts now were designed for teams in the nineteen forties. Valley League teams come, or even the high school teams, twenty-twenty-five kids on a roster, they can't get in the dugouts. The field needs work. So it's just a major overhaul. At some point, like I told Mr. Trey several months ago, at some point, it's going to have to be addressed. Is it possible to break it up and to, you know, do certain areas at one time? Yeah, you can. You can do, you know, it's probably the best scenario to do it that way in stages. Start with your seating area.
Sound system.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of things, you know, kind of moving it back a little bit to give them another ten or fifteen feet in the outfield because it's short. And again, with that, I would bring in a consultant, someone that can, you know, has expertise in that. But it just basically needs a rebirth, new life. It's functional now. It's a great field, but the amenities around it aren't up to par.
Yes, Terry, as I was thinking, in relation to your, I had one of the Mary Baldwin baseball players say that the stadium is actually, or the foul field is too short to even come up to college standards.
Right. Well, in college, you know, we don't have a warning track. There's not enough room for a warning track. You go to some other Valley League schools, they're, you know, they're, well, you know, it's like Charlottesville. They're playing, you know, a lot bigger field.
Is there room back there, Chris?
It's tight.
Could be tight, got that road back there.
And the reason, you know, when you see the Arbor Vitae in the outfield, those big green trees, we put those there to shield our park maintenance compound, which is directly, and they serve. to shield our park maintenance compound, which is directly, and they, they serve two purposes. They shield, uh, the view, which is not very slightly if you're sitting in the stands. And it also saves our equipment with the balls that, you know, the home run balls and, you know, knocking out truck, uh, windows and backhoe windows. Uh, so you're limited how far we can go. You know, my thought is to make the field larger. We're going to, if we ever would do that, that you start, take everything out behind it and go a little bit that way, kind of on both ends. Um, but at some point down the road, it's going to have to be addressed. And like you said, Mr. Holmes, I mean, you can do a section at a time, stage one and stage two. But again, I'll say the field itself is, is, other than being a little short, is, is a good field.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I just had another one about the, the Greenville Avenue entryway. Do we have any idea when the, the people who bought the mall are going to do anything with that property? Does anybody know?
A lot of knows in the audience.
Just, you know, it just doesn't seem to make that entryway a big thing right now until we know what they're going to do up there. But, uh, I'm, I'm for the emergency radios in the Gypsy Hill bathrooms and, uh, uh, the pool, pool house flood shields. I don't know if Union Town Water and Sewer can be separated or if it's better to do them both at the same time. You know, I don't know if that would save a lot of money, but, uh, maybe do the water first and then, then sewer or do, you know, I'm, I'm for doing both of them. And then we, we haven't mentioned the Gardner Springs, uh, water pump. That seems like that needs to be done. That hasn't been, I mean, that's been talked about for a long time.
Yeah, um, we are at the 90% design level right now and, uh, we, we are, um, uh, very close to putting this out for bid. Uh, we're, we're going to be going for the permits, uh, in short order. And so we have made substantial progress in the design of the Gardner Springs project. We're very close. So much so is that I, I will be discussing with our financial advisors our debt service options. So we're, we're, we're very close on that.
Great. Any additional questions or comments?
Uh, yes. Go ahead.
Uh, Merrick, I, um, you know, I, I am interested in the, the thought of, of getting ahead of something for a change instead of being behind. So the, the fire apparatus, um, that, that does intrigue me. I do, uh, support the emergency radios. I do think that we need to do something with Union Town. The other thing, the, I guess I've heard a lot of people mention the flood shields, which I think is great. But I'm more interested in this tunnel repair and maintenance design because I feel like that, that might help keep us from needing the flood shields. So I would like to, you know, look at that a lot. Um, so that's, you know.
I'm for that too. I, I, I was looking at the stand over top, it's kind of printed over top of it. Because I think that's real important. I think it's more important than the flood shields.
Okay. Carolyn, did you have a comment?
Well, yes, I had, I had a couple. Uh, in, in terms of flood shields and the, uh, design of the tunnel repair, I'm, I'm for both of them. Uh, I think our, our businesses downtown suffered a lot. And, um, one of these things can give them some, some immediate, uh, help. And the other one is, is going to take longer. That's just the design of the tunnel repair. And that's going to be for the future because that, that costs a lot more money. But my other question was, aren't there funds, are, are there ARPA funds that are competitive that are in block? Like that you would, you would, uh, submit applications or something for separately, particularly the, the stormwater flood mitigation, water sewer, uh, or am I thinking the infrastructure bill?
There, there are some opportunities for, for stormwater with competitive. And then the infrastructure bill, uh, will also have some opportunities as well. The infrastructure bill is probably not going to be out for competition for another year, the last I heard. It's kind of being held up somewhere in Washington. So it's, it's probably going to be a year after that. But, but we are looking down other avenues as well. Yes, ma'am.
And, and I did learn just today that, uh, you know, as we had, we had a presentation on the, the VDOT, uh, road through Stanton Crossing and how it was, uh, they were not going to provide the charging stations. But I found out there's funding in the infrastructure bill specifically for charging stations. So, so we ought to, you know, get on that one, uh, so that we can have that. Because I think VDOT is going to put in the wiring and, and the conduit and everything. And so I think with this, uh, the federal funding and the infrastructure bill, uh, we, we'll be able to complete it.
I did note, I've made note of that. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Dahl, can I add to your question earlier that you had about grants? So I think you also mentioned this at the December meeting and I did follow up with the planning district commission, Elizabeth McCarty, who's kind of the go-to person there. And she is putting us in contact with some folks that, so most of them are loans unfortunately, but there, there may be some grants that Virginia Department of Health that we can pursue with water infrastructure in particular. So thank you. You brought that up and I, I've started to pursue that. So we are looking into that. So we'll be looking for any sources of funding that we can find. And that's one, that is one that I followed up on.
All right, great.
Yes.
Great. Anything else? Mr. Trey, I like the idea of the 80/20, but, um, I do agree that we need all of the information, um, the community outreach.
That's great. Yeah, we can, like I said, we're going to try to get that in front of you as soon as we can. But this gives us a good starting point, I think. And, and I know Mr. Trey probably has a lot of good information and I took a lot of good notes. So we'll be, you know, looking at all these ideas and projects and trying to put some timelines together for sure and a plan.
I like all the projects listed. I, I really would like to give this, um, some additional thought. And I will have some questions for you, Mr. Trey. I mean, the Gypsy Hill bathrooms, yes. Emergency radio, yes. Fire apparatuses, yes. Union Town Water and Sewer, yes. The Gardner Springs water pump, yes. But, you know, I want to study this a little bit more. So there will be questions forthcoming.
Yes, ma'am.
Right. Yes.
Um, let's see. Ms. Smith, can you put back the presentation? I just want to show this last slide. And then we will wrap this up. So this last slide is just our schedule coming up. And you can find this presentation and others related to 23 budget development on the city's budget website under the finance department. But this is the link, um, how folks can contact city council. Here are upcoming public meetings and work sessions. And like I mentioned before, it's February 10th meeting you'll consider and hopefully adopt the FY 2026 IP. Uh, the proposed budget will be presented on March 24th. We have a series of work sessions following that and then budget adoption on April 28th. And there's one public hearing this year because there's no real estate assessment this year. So we have one public hearing just on the budget and that will occur on April 14th. So that's our schedule. We will be getting this out there so that everybody knows how they can participate and provide input under the budget as we, you know, as the proposed budget gets out there and you all work through the adopted budget for the month of March and April. So.
Ms. Beauregard, if the council is in agreement on the budget or, or at least, um, an agreement to move forward with the approval of the budget, do we have to do that on the 28th or could we do that sooner?
We can do it sooner.
We could do it sooner.
Ready to do it sooner, sure.
All right. Right. Any additional questions or comments? Right. Thank you, everyone, for your time and all of your hard work to, um, put this budget development package together. With that, this, um, FY 2023 budget development city council work session for February 2nd, 2022 is now adjourned.